We stand for the pledge of allegiance. Call we need order, roll call.
Mayor Westergaard.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yep.
Anne Steinkamp.
Yes.
Okay, and Terry is gone at the, uh, at the state fair with, uh, something regarding pork producers or something today, so Terry's going to be gone.
Public work, everybody's on the agenda. Concerned agenda, any additions or corrections?
Yeah, I do want to talk about that real quick, that there's, there was two bills that were added. One was for KTIV for, for advertising for the, uh, weather cam for the first month. Then, um, did you see the name of Patricia Oberding?
Not twice.
There's a large, uh, repayment of, of an, oh, a refund of an overpayment on utilities. And what had happened there is they're a water and sewer customer, and in 2018, we re- we replaced the water meter there, okay? Replaced the water meter with a regular five eighths inch water meter base, but the head that we put on that was for an inch water meter. So basically, when it registered one gallon, when one gallon went through their register, four, it registered about four times too much. So, um, over the course of the years, they just kept paying the bill. And even, even though the water usage was consistently high, you know, so they just kept paying the bill. But here the past month or so, they've, uh, really questioned this. We get down to the bottom of it, Dean was, uh, real good about getting out there and checking the meter and finds that we have this inch head on a five eighths inch meter. So anyway, it has been, they've been overpaying that for, for all these years. So the amount there, um, is due to them, and they just requested that it be paid instead of, uh, instead of a utility credit.
I make the motion to approve. Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Boltman.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Steinkamp.
Yes.
Okay, we have a building permit for Jim Seeger, North State Road. Motion to approve.
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Moller.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Steinkamp.
Yes.
Okay, right, ordinance 514, swimming pools.
Yeah, so let's, uh, really just take a look at the, at the council memo. It can, can contrast the existing, uh, the existing code versus what the, uh, new code is proposed to be. The existing code refers to this concept of permanent pools, and it says permanent pools are defined as in ground or above ground with a water depth of at least two feet. The planning and zoning, um, commission, they did not care for that word permanent at all, thinking that there can be some, some pools that were, would meet this definition, but really wouldn't seem to be permanent, but they still would wish to regulate those. So if the proposed change is that it would go to any in-ground or above-ground pool with a water depth of at least two feet and water surface of at least 150 square feet, requires a building permit. And then this, then, then, so if it requires a building permit, then it goes on to require that it be enclosed by a fence at least four feet tall, and with, uh, openings not larger than a four-inch orb can pass through, and then it's got to have one of those self-latching gates. Okay, so it's just a, a minor wording on that does away with the concept of a permanent pool, but, um, so if, if the pool has more than, in two feet of water and more than 150 square feet of surface area, it would require a building permit. And, and the fencing then.
So I would make a motion that we approve ordinance 514.
Got a question for you. Do you have to pay the permit every year if it's, if you take it down and put it up every year?
No.
I don't think that's the intent.
Well, I'm sure that's not the intent, but what does it say? Because there are some people who take them down for the winter time and then put them back up.
Good point.
They, we get this word in there one time, fee.
Can do that.
I guess.
Sure.
Can't you?
We'll come up with something like that.
Thanks.
I'm right, aren't I?
Yes, you are.
You usually are.
Uh, just need a, uh, second.
Remember, second, 514.
Awesome.
Roll call.
Tom.
Yes.
Boltman. Moller.
Yes.
Steinkamp.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 515, a density residential district.
All right, so this would create an, an R5 residential district. We call it a medium-density residential district. Now, fact of the matter is that the regulations in, in the R5 district are virtually identical to an R3 district. So what this, uh, allows is, uh, uh, single-family and duplex, and that it, uh, the main difference out of this, though, is that it allows, uh, the smaller lots. So, um, the minimum width of a lot in an R5, uh, would be 40 feet as opposed to 50 feet with, within a, uh, R3 district. And then, but the square footage actually remains the same at 5,000. So it's, uh, the width is 40 feet, but the, uh, square footage is 5,000. So it makes, could potentially make for, uh, narrower and much longer lots. The planning and zoning recommends this, though, and so the concept would be if we, if we have folks who would be interested in being zoned R5 then, which they know we do, that we pass this, this ordinance, get the R5 zone in place, then they recommend, they would, uh, come requesting to, uh, change their zoning designation to R5, to R5.
This is our first step, right?
There you go.
Okay, you got a motion on 515?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Tom.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Steinkamp.
Yes.
That's the first reading.
Yeah, let's, um...
Make a motion that we wave the other two radiance, or?
You sh- you sure can.
Yeah. No second?
Second.
Roll call.
Tom.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Boltman. Steinkamp.
Yes.
Okay, one more, one more motion then, which would finally approve ordinance number 515.
So move. Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Boltman. Tom. Moller.
Yes.
Steinkamp.
Yes.
All right, done. We gotta publish that. Publish on the 25th, so anytime after that, we can be taking an application for rezoning.
Resolution 2133, we need a variance for Deanna Helgerson.
Yeah, so this would allow for a, uh, a housing addition on, and in front of Deanna's house, she would propose to put a six-foot wide housing addition on there, and the, uh, front yard setback would allow for three feet. So the, uh, Board of Adjustment has granted a variance for this additional three feet so that, uh, Deanna could do what she wanted to, and the council can approve the resolution on page 13, or, or the only other thing you can do is remand it back to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Roll call.
Moller.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yep.
Tom.
Yes.
Steinkamp.
Yes.
We'll need a motion to approve a building permit. So move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Boltman. Moller.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Steinkamp.
Yes.
Thank you for your patience.
There you go, it's done.
Okay, you're done tomorrow? You're done tomorrow? Okay, resolution 2134, variance for Deanna and Jeffrey Smith, Blossom Street.
Yeah, so this, so, Deanna and Jeffrey Smith had purchased this lot to hit the corner of, of Fourth and Blossom, and they tore the, the home down. This is a corner lot, it requires front yard setbacks on both sides. Um, there's issue there with Fourth Street, that the right-of-way of Fourth Street had been real wide, but the city in the 90s had sold off portions of that right-of-way to the neighbors. So, um, they had, had requested a variance to allow them to be closer than the average on, on Fourth Street, and then also for the rear yard, which should be to the west. The Board of Adjustment has granted this variance.
So move.
The question on, uh, the west side, there is, I assume, an easement to go up through there, the, that's where the secondary power runs from the transformer to a handle that feeds that property and the west property. So, I don't know how far they want to set back or what they're thinking there, but...
Yeah, they're gonna be...
There is, there is some utilities on that west property line.
It's gonna be six feet off of the property line instead of...
Okay, we should be all right then. Okay.
Did you get a motion on that?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Boltman.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Steinkamp.
Yes.
Need a motion to approve a building permit.
So move.
Second? Roll call.
Moller.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Steinkamp.
Yes.
I do want to comment on that. I went to that meeting, um, I, I guess I, I, I'll tell you what, I actually did a 360 in that meeting, totally changed my mind going in. And it's on the property that affects you. There was a application, a request to, um, give a variance for a house on North State Road. The request was for a 45-foot lot.
Yep.
Right? Um, I went in there thinking that, you know, that's opening up a can of worms, but a couple people made comments in that meeting. Kelly Bureau for one said, "Well, actually, how much does this impact us, and where is it going to impact us?" And I thought about that, I thought, you know, really, are we opening a can of worms? Do we even know how many lots we have that would affect that? And I, quite frankly, I think she's right. Also, I think Lake, all properties always have to be treated a little bit different than town. I think you can give variances out there that you would have given town, um, just because Lake Living is usually a little tighter. Some of the conditions are bad out there as far as, you know, liquid drive, some of those old homes, so they got nowhere to go. So we try to work with them. Um, I don't know if that was the right decision or not, but, um, I felt like this developer was led to believe that he was going to be able to do this. And should he have maybe researched more? Maybe so, but I think we, as a city, should not be encouraging developers in a project that is going to get blindsided. And this is at least the second time, if not the third time that this has happened. I think the city has to be more careful. How many towns have developers coming in here that want to do something? You know, we can't just keep kicking them in the butt and telling them, you know, the same thing happened on East, on the East Shore. You know, that, and that guy had put a lot of money into that project, and it never got off the ground. I'm sure this guy's got money in this project, and it never got off the ground. Now we've got one home, you know, technically, the right thing probably would have been one home in the middle of that lot, but that isn't what happened. Now we got one home over here, we got all this space that'll never go anywhere. It'll never be taxed for, for residents. And I think it's a mistake, and I think it's a mistake for the city to lead a developer to think that that can happen, and then they get to the board and it doesn't happen. So, um, I don't know if they need to relook at, or if it's a dead deal. You know, I hope he can work something out, because I think he's got quite a bit of money in this, and that's too bad, I think, so. That's just my two cents. I don't know if he was misled from other people or not, but I, I, I know he was misled from the city, so I, I hope we don't make that mistake again.
That was an interesting meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, we have an application for our business property improvement grant, Bob Moore.
Yeah, for Bob Moore, for his, the, uh, this truck shed that's going in down there at the old Midstates building. You can see some pictures on page 26 about what he's doing. He's taken that, that Norwood shed, turning it from a, from a storage area into really a physically functioning, uh, truck shop. So this is redoing the exterior on, on the south and the, and the west side, but mainly it's a lot of interior work, new, new plumbing, new electrical, everything that goes along with it. Uh, cost of estimate on that is $150,000, and he's seeking that $5,000 business property improvement grant.
I'll make the motion to approve.
So, roll call.
Moller.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Steinkamp.
Yes.
Okay, we have some backhoe issues.
We have some backhoe issues.
I was on vacation when that happened.
We just got to fix it.
Yeah. So yeah, we're, really, the long and short of it, of course, is that our, our backhoe, which we purchased in 2007, the, the transmission has gone out of that backhoe. So we, uh, get an estimate on, on repairing that and replacing the transmission, and Denny Blessington and his son-in-law, they can do that. Their cost estimate would be $30,000 to, uh, to replace that transmission. While we're doing this, though, you know, we certainly wanted to take a look at some, some options about, uh, about purchasing, and if we're going to look at, at a big investment like that on a repair. So I handed out tonight these, uh, these two proposals then, that, that Dean has gotten. So Whitey, we've, we've got two proposals now. We had one, uh, last week, but got another one today. So, uh, there are proposals for, for light, uh, machines, one's from, from John Deere, and then one's from, from Cat, and, uh, either one, we're looking at the, the cost estimate. We'd be somewhere around $120,000 for, for the machine. We had talked last week, Whitey, about that, and it was 109, and they needed to have quick attached attachments on the front that, that added to that cost.
Okay, what's the warranty on it?
Five, five years, and then you can, you can extend it. You can extend that. After that. After that, as long as you extend it before the warranty is up, you can extend it.
Looks like five years or 2,000 hours?
Yeah.
How many hours a year do we put on a backhoe?
That backhoe is a '07, and I think we got $3,400 on it.
I had those numbers.
Well, it looks like John Deere is going to give you $13,000, that's kind of a slap in the face. We're just taking it for free.
Yeah, any and his son-in-law are interested in it also.
Yeah, they're going to pay more money than that.
Yeah, uh, Cat doesn't want it, that's why they didn't give a price on it.
What if we put it up for a bid?
Yeah.
I just think it's a lot of money. I'm not so sure we need a new one.
We paid 70 for that one when we bought it new in '07.
You know, $30,000 repair bill compared to 120.
The problem that scares me is that motor has been overheated more than once. So I'm fine with fixing that one, rather than think about even going and getting a used one, because if you get a used one, you got the same thing. Fix it, that's okay, but this is going to be the motor, you know, in a year or two? And then it also does need tires, um, talking with the John Deere dealer and stuff, that's, uh, about $2,500 a tire on the back. And it, it'll need it within a year. Need the tires. It's just better how much you want to keep dumping into it.
And Denny gets tires?
I... Nope, we bought the last ones through Albright's in Walley.
I just don't...
So what, what, so, so what you're saying is 120,000 is, uh, is what the new machine is going to cost, or is that right?
Well, the John Deere is 116, 690.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you got to look at, it's going to cost us $30,000 to put it on into the whole machine that's got a lot of other issues that's going to come, come about. So if you, how much is John Deere willing to give us?
13,000.
13, nothing.
Well, yeah, nothing, I understand that, but 13,000 more, so you take that 30,000 we're going to spend, we spent actually another 80,000, 70,000, and we have a new machine, because, you know what I'm saying, because what it's going to cost us and what the final bill is, are you tracking on what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I just wonder how much we use this machine if it warrants new, you know, there's, you know, we need a new sweeper. Quite frankly, I'd like to see that thing go by a little more often. I, I just, this is not my area of expertise, obviously. I just question how much I've seen that backhoe out. How, how much do you need it?
We use it pretty regularly during, every week, and then on the...
About JCB?
Then you get it in the winter time, it's used a lot.
There's other backhoes out there besides these two?
I talked to John Healy about JCB, and he didn't, he's got one, and he said, "As much as you guys use it, you wouldn't want that one, or that brand."
You know, 120,000, it's not in the budget, I know we got the extra money laying back.
Terry did pull that up about the, the amount of funds that we have in our, in our electric, our public works funds, we have about $170,000 in, in those funds now, um, with really no, no huge significant purchases planned for, for this year, other than a dump truck, which has its own lot of money.
Well, you know, I'm looking at the John Deere one, it says 103,000, you know, not 120, but, you know, again, you know, if we put that old one up for bid, um, it's quite possible we'll probably get more than 13,000 for it.
Well, the 103 isn't accurate, right? Because that's without attachments.
That adds a 13,000 to it.
Right.
It's 1316.
It's accurate, and that has the proper attachments on it.
Oh, I thought you said it was 120.
Well, the trade-in is still...
Basically, they're, they're right around 120 on both of these.
That's without the trade-in.
103 is worth the trade-in, right?
Yes.
Right.
Got it, got it, got it.
And if we, you know, I don't know if we can get 20 out of it, I don't know.
I...
We bet it out?
I think ours gives us more than we think.
Yeah.
We have.
What if you just put it up to see what you can get out of it before we decide, is that right?
Because we can, we can accept or deny, you know, bids, can't we?
You can set a reserve, I think, if you want.
Oh, okay.
Maybe we could try auction time. Jenna and Jared do it all the time, they go to, like, farms for machinery and take pictures of it and put it up there on auction time. Doesn't mean you got to sell it, see what you can get for a bid.
Is there any, is there any chance we dig into this and say we do put different transmission? Is there a possibility that something else could be going wrong inside there?
Yep, that's why he has his bid at 30,000.
That's, Denny thinks that's the high amount to take. Could take less.
That's the same thing John Deere said and Cat.
Yeah, you never know until they open it up. That was Denny's worst-case scenario, 30,000.
I'd like to, I'd like to see what we get out of the Oma, and then make our decision based on that. You know, since we're kind of 50/50 on where we're headed. That's all right.
We can do that. What that does is, is postpones decision-making on this about when, when we would need a machine, though. And for now, we can go a while, probably, with, without a machine.
We got any projects that we're, Dean wasn't for right now?
We're not pressing with it.
Because if, because if we had to hire somebody, you know, less digging into, to do it.
Well, we got the mini-ex that we, as far as digging part, that, as long as it ain't deeper than Love Feet. Because that's, that hole that is deeper than Love Feet.
How often do you do, go deeper?
Use this water meter if we do, or sewer.
Has anybody tried to negotiate with John Deere, offer, see if they'd give a little more for it?
No, we, we have not, uh, had any negotiations yet.
Well, I would try to send somebody in, Dean or somebody in there, and say we're on the best, and then see if they could give us a little more for a trade-in, and that's see where we're at.
Or John.
Well, what if we put it out there for bid and put a reserve on it and...
See what happens.
See what happens.
Right.
I mean, what do we got to lose?
We don't, and we could put it where Sandy suggests, and we could put it other places, why not?
Yeah. We all got it, you can say it.
And then how long do we do that? It's timeframe, a couple weeks?
Oh, when it was bigger, you, you would, you would get listed and sold within a month.
I would say 30 days.
Would that 30 days be...
I think we'd get through 30 days. Yeah, we might, should be able to get 30 days. We're pushing, we pushed the, uh, dump up with the skid loader today. As long as we keep up with that.
The dump pit burning?
What's that?
The dump pit burning?
It, uh, it's constantly smoldering. We did push it up, and there was a fire out there today, but we went out there, took fire truck and put it out.
She was supposed to go to draw back, and he's got deaf problems with the motor. I think deaf parts are hard to come by. Everybody else got the same problem.
So do we need a motion on that?
Yeah, what's, what's your reserve amount to, to be?
75,000.
Be the problem owner of that?
I don't know. Whitey, what do you think the reserve should be on that old one, if we put it up to bid? What's your...
Man, that's hard to say, you know, people are going to stay away with that, with that transmission, because this thing is '07, and they're like, you know, but if they got shops, you know, guy's got a shop, that's just to keep his bed busy, so, I don't know, I, I'd say 25, maybe, at the most. That's my opinion only.
25, 30?
Yeah. But 30, I would, this is just the exact amount that our downstream line transmission, see what happens. Somebody could have a machine that, you know... What's everybody else's like? I mean, I'm just...
That sounds good.
I don't know, I'm not into that.
That was motion to set up, is it 30?
I think it's worth a try.
It's worth a try.
Second?
So who moved?
Whitey.
Whitey did.
Did you bring him on that flip phone?
Sure.
Roll call, Dave's second, right?
Okay, okay, yeah, uh, roll call, then, Steinkamp.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Tom.
Okay, we have some good news from Camp Crescent this time.
What's that mean?
I mean, always good news.
Not bad news?
No, no. Just messing with you.
That's, so I tell them, I have 11 people above me. Okay, so I've been working on this forever, and, um, I finally got the pictures back today, which we had to redo back and forth emails about six times for corrections. Um, did you get the new packet from this afternoon, y'all?
Yes.
So it's just always been a hassle since I've been down here, like, we watch hamsters drive around in circles and in circles and in circles. You know, we show them in the map at the office, we're not staffed enough to have a courtesy person take them to their site. So we thought about doing the signage, and some of my signage paper has stuff that Scott wants in other places. So our thought, outlawed thought is, though, if we're going to do it, they charge $260 for a sheet of metal, that is, I think, .04 gauge metal. And so right now, we about have between the campground and some things Scott wants, and we do have a little space left, if you can think of anything. We're right at five sheets of metal. So, um, what I did this morning with, um, Trophies Plus, and I had Scott come down, because we did eliminate some signs that were maybe not necessary, that Trophies Plus thought they might, we'd like, but, um, we went around and decided where the signs would go in the, in the campground. And it's like, the big one, which, by the way, has a revamped map on it, which shows, like, say lot 138, we get this house all the time, it looks like they've got lake access, so they can see the water with the map that we're using right now, and there isn't. Um, the lakefront properties go further down to the east than what our current map shows. Also, our current map, the A lots are set in there absolutely opposite of what they truly are. So Trophies Plus, um, corrected our map. And, um, I've talked to them today, in fact, I've already got all the formats, um, they said the fee will be a little, you can read the, the letter I got back, but we have rights to use this map now. So anyway, the bathhouses would all be numbered, because we ref... So anyway, the bathhouses would all be numbered, cause we refer to them as bathhouse one, bathhouse two, three. We would not put one down by the, um, men's shelter house, we wouldn't put signage on that one. Overflow parking is a big deal, nobody can find where to go to the overflow parking, which is behind the maintenance shed. Um, so there'll be plenty of arrows telling them where to go for that. Where we'll use a new, um, our office front has, um, a wooden, it says registration here. Our new one would be uniform with what all the businesses in town have. And then mini golf at, um, the Boulder's mini golf, there's just nothing there at the entrance when you, um, walk into the golf that says anything, except for no smoking, a really old yucky faded no smoking sign. Um, and here we'll be able to tell them that no food, no pets, don't put rocks on the cubs and stay on the path, the things that we use our megaphone and yell out the window all the time, because they don't know, it's not on the scorecards, it's not anywhere. Um, and then we'll, we'll use the, um, same signage to put the number on top of the building, which is an old and faded one now. And the box where our camping permits are, and a better signage where to put the deposit, because it blends into the rocks so well, people have no idea. They'll just put their money right in a little box sitting outside that anybody can take. Um, another sign that's on there that I don't know if we've ever talked to you guys about, it's a rent station. And that rent station, um, is very hard to get the parts for right now because of COVID, it looks like it'll be a next spring project, it won't cost much at all. It's just a little plumbing that's already there, but on the, um, east side of bathhouse number three, the one right across from my office, um, we're gonna put a rent station there so they can rinse off, because it's a huge problem of them going into the showers with all the sand on them. Um, if Eric was here, he'd tell you, he's gotta take those traps out. And they're just always full of sand, and the sinks are always full of sand, because they'll rinse their feet right up in the sinks. Um, so with the rent station, we hope that would eliminate, and again, it's, it won't cost much to do that, I promise.
So are you gonna put like, like what were you, I, I think the rent station is a fantastic idea. And so would you have like something for them to stand on that that water will drain away, like a?
Um, right now, it's gonna be, like right now, we have the holes laying there, and honestly, it's a, um, it's a hazard, because the hose just lays on the ground, right on that sidewalk. Um, the water does already kind of run off that, no, there's nothing that we have talked about right now, it's literally gonna be, um, a spigot about off the ground this far, and then another one a little taller. But what we're looking for and what we're having a problem getting is the kind that you have to hold the button for the water to run. And as soon as you let go, the water shuts off. Um, so that we don't have them just letting the water run, because like right now, it's just a hose, I have a key, I gotta go over there and, um, let the water work. But if they wanna stand there and let the water run all day and nobody watches it, it could run all day. This is just kinda like what you see in Mexico.
Yeah, well, even if you had like, um, you know, just crates or what am I talking about? Something to stand on that, that, that their feet stay halfway clean, you know?
Right, well, once they leave that, they're on sidewalk to get into the shower. Because it's on concrete now. So they would leave the rent station, either go around to the girls or go other side to the, to the guys. Um, and a lot of it even is just parents have come up and asked, you know, they just wanna get their kids some stuff before they put them in their car to take them home, because they're not all campers and staying there. Um, so we do provide a hose, um, when the beach is super busy, um, and it gets used all the time. So that will be the rent station sign. Um, and the rest of the signs are just explanatory. Um, and of course, we try to make it so that we don't have to dig more holes, more posts, more weed eating. And I'm trying to use every pole post that I can, um, to mount these on. But it's gonna have to be some new ones.
So I have, I have some questions, Sandy.
Okay.
So, um, the, the electrical, where you've got the thirty amp, you know?
On which one?
Well, you've got sites one twenty-four through one thirty and fifty-one through ninety-one.
Yeah.
Because aren't we thinking about maybe that we're gonna have to up that electrical down there and, and do we want that thirty amp on there and then we change it and we gotta redo it?
That has been the whole thing also, we're trying to figure out how to afford this, but you have to know if they're thirty amp or fifty amp, because, um, the way the campers are. If we're not there and we don't have the reserve sign in the post, they wanna know what they're hooking up, you know, like they can follow the arrows. I get exactly what you're saying, I wish the whole place was fifty amp, would be my goal in life, wouldn't that be sweet?
Yeah, I know.
Um, it's not.
So when they, they rent, so you're saying that they've like rented this online? And they just drive in?
Some go online and rent.
And they've got assigned a site?
Some go online and go to camp crescent dot com and reserve, but a lot of people, they'll just show up after hours. And it's a classic sign for a camper, every campground does this. If there's a, a campsite that doesn't have a reserve sign at the post, it's open to rent.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
And they can pull in there and they'll either come up and try to find this box and deposit thing, which is hard on our building right now. Or they'll just wait till morning when we open, they'll come up like, hey, we showed up last night.
Okay, okay.
Cause we're using this.
Am I?
So yeah, do I, am I crazy about that? Because I hope we are doing some upgrades, I have no idea if you guys are talking about it or if it's in the budget or not. I don't know.
Well, we usually talk about it at the, you know, towards the planning, but so the other.
But the other thing is too, at, and again, I'm conservative with money, but at two hundred and sixty dollars a sheet, how many of these would actually, signs would have to be replaced?
Right.
At the end of the process.
Okay, so my next question is, um, the parking. So, I think the parking needs to be identified more, and I guess my question is, we've talked about the museum parking, have we talked about this, about actually making that into a parking lot, would that be helpful?
So, um, it's in my book of notes to visit with you guys at the end of the season.
Okay.
Um, on one of our rules is, and it's the beat our head on the door over and over and gotta tell the same people over and over, it's, they're allowed a camper and a tent if they want, but one vehicle per site. I'm telling you guys, there is no reason why A, or like one through twenty-seven, um, some of them fifties and sixties, especially the eighties and nineties, there's no reason they can't have two cars there. There's so much space. The only ones that really we need to make, make follow is the lakefront, because they're jam packed in there, right Cody?
Uh huh.
Um, the seasonal, that whole section, um, I would really enforce it there. Um, it seems like there's a, I got it all mapped out to like present to you guys and show you that can we change the parking?
Cause I don't know why we couldn't have it where they can, where they got space, I mean, you know, it's just like a whole tech.
Right, and you know what? So then it's a privilege, if you camp at these sites, it's, that's how we'll market it.
Exactly, yeah.
But it's just like, okay, like look at some of these on site A, A one through A sixteen. Another fight every weekend, no tents, no rugs. Okay, so it's, we, um, Connie, we, she is so good. She's updated our website, so it's gonna have big wording, where like when you book this, no rugs. Um, you know, that will be like, those sites, say it's fifty through ninety. You get the option of having two vehicles.
Yeah.
But on the ones you can't, it's gonna be marketed, one vehicle per site enforced.
Well, we'll talk about that at the end of the year, but, um, I do, I, I, I just, if we're looking at signage, and maybe it's not a big deal if we have to get some signs later, but I just wonder about this, that museum parking, that's just green grass sitting over there that I know people love to drive and look at it. But I, but you have to define parking, that lot we put up here, I know Scott now is gonna get some signs, but it's ridiculous, it just, nobody knows what it is. It looks like a bunch of gravel with the, with the recycling thing.
With overflow park board laying there.
And right smack in the middle of it, so.
Right.
Anyway, I just think that we oughta try to get more parking for the people that are limited to one vehicle.
I would, I am on board with all that, but then what I would like to see then is, so you know where our overflow parking is right now? Behind there? Have it gated or something, even if it was another road to that, just so like it's inviting. And not a, oh my gosh, we have to leave the entire campground now, go all the way up and around and park, but they're camping in spot thirty-six, the furthest place away.
Okay.
I would like to see it, um, inviting to the campground to do that, but that's on my.
Yep, okay.
On my bookwork to visit with you about rules two.
My next thing is, um, the cart permit, the cart signs, what the golf cart signs for around town, which are so needed. But, I wonder if it, and I know you, you know, you use space for wordage, but driver's license required, but it seems to me like a driver's license and a cart permit are required.
Can I add to that? Cause this is Scott's signs. I think this is bigger than any of them, because I see them all night long is, and not allowed after dusk. And these signs, we can work with it, you guys, we have, you get, have the, do you have the email he sent me? We have this much, we have space that we can redo these signs and make them bigger. We're not married to this at the moment.
Well, I really think that needs to be on there, and I think the police department's been doing a bang up job this year.
We've been trying.
Uh, yeah, yeah, because other years, it's just kind of been, oops, go home, you know? So I think, um, I.
But we could bullet point it, golf carts, and then it could be driver's license, the permit, not allowed after dusk. You could bullet it on there.
I definitely think that.
I mean, those are the three big things.
Yeah, I definitely think we oughta add to that, and the only other thing I saw that I wondered about was.
And then the, the big one, this isn't the real verbiage, we just didn't know what we were gonna put on it. This would be your big sign for down by that dumpster, the parking lot by the elevator?
Yeah. I like where you could only park here slowly.
Yeah, I thought, I thought, what is that?
That's just.
Oh, okay.
We're being funny. Um, downtown parking lot, or I don't even know what you guys are calling that space.
We're calling it the recycling dump, so I.
Right, but we, we have allotted space on these five sheets for a big sign for that.
Right, so yeah.
You guys though just need to come up with the verbiage is gonna be, and once we get, everybody's happy here, what'd he say, three to five days?
Yeah, it doesn't take long.
These signs will be here.
Yeah, yeah.
So on, on the parking lot one, um, I guess I would just look at, at a basic sign that says public parking lot. But they would think, uh, passenger vehicles only, no semis, boats, campers.
Right. And I would think what, twenty-four hours, is that what you're thinking?
Well, that was, that was the question then about time limits, and I've talked with Brandon about that today, he maybe suggested we would not have a time limit until it becomes a problem.
No semis what? No semis?
No semis, boats, campers.
I, we have a place in town that can put those. So I'm buying.
Any, what's, what's everybody's thoughts on the maximum allowable time to park down there?
I, I like where it's a problem. It's a problem. Cause if we're kind of trying to encourage the apartment people to park there.
They'll be there quite a while.
Right.
But we gotta go somewhere in twenty-four hours before we move.
Yeah, you know, I, when I was thinking about this, what the maximum length would be, I would've said a week or two weeks.
Well, then I just leave, I would've put that on. Okay, thanks Sandy.
Anyway, cost on this is looking to be about, uh, twelve hundred and fifty dollars plus, uh, plus some shipping. And a little cost on the, uh, use of the map.
Yeah.
Is that gonna put that in the golf cart?
Yeah, we proposed six, proposed six of those signs, Whitey.
Okay.
Jeff and I have talked once about upgrades to the fifty amps. It was more than just putting the pedestals there.
We've talked a lot, yeah.
Look, I think we know we gotta do something, otherwise we're down there every weekend.
Cause my, my camper only runs on fifty amps and that there.
Yeah, I think it's something that Jeff will have to give us a plan.
Step to figure out a site, you know, an area at a time and do an area a year.
Right. And see what.
That's, that's.
Where you think, where we think, you think we oughta start?
Cause we're gonna have to look at transformer size, we're gonna have to look at a lot more than just pads.
Right.
Wire size.
These campers just keep getting bigger and, and this camping is just taking on a new, a whole new profile, and I'm telling you, that's, people will leave because, well, they got their oning over, cause all of a sudden they're coming with five pull-ups, slide-outs on a camper. You know, it's like, it's something we deal with every weekend, and then the electrical, and when we have to call these guys, they are so gracious, I mean, not gracious, but not at all. I thought, I thought mistook. Uh, but you, they're, I mean, they're pleasant about it, it's like, yep, we'll be right down, you know, and they're right there, and I can't tell you how all but maybe one camper all season, and we've had tons of electrical issues. And Jeff, I wanted to just say this too, the last time we had a really big problem, he went to camper, to camper, to camper, to camper, to camper, and explained to them what was going on in the situation, because they beat us up at the office.
So is it, did the outsider figure their thing, did that help with them?
Oh, it helped. It's a load, it was a, it's all been a load issue, and you're getting bigger campers, you're running, you're used to running thirty amps, and it's not a big issue when you're at seventy or seventy-five degrees out. You start getting up into that ninety, hundred degrees, then we start overheating stuff.
Right.
And none of their stuff shuts off, you're, some of it is, there's no trees out there any longer, so, you know, not big trees.
Right.
To shade stuff. So then their, your air will run non-stop. And not all campers, I'm a camper too, not all of them think, oh, I'm going in, I'm just gonna turn everything on, but some of them do that. It's, that's why I went around to every camper this last time. Please help me shave some load. If you do this, this keeps you on, your air will be on, you get to sleep tonight in cool air, and it helps.
We never had a problem, well, thanks for doing that, um, I think we are, um, gonna have to, I don't know if we have to raise the rates or whatever we gotta do, but we're gonna have to improve the electricity down there.
It's always a challenge, and this year, especially brand, you're new, I, I think everybody's done an outstanding job. Electricians, public works, everybody. Camp ground staff, like, not everybody's pleasant when you're down there. I've seen them.
Right?
Thanks for everything you guys are doing.
City foot report?
Do we have a motion to proceed with sign program?
Oh yeah, you want that?
I'll make a motion.
So, roll call.
Tom?
Thank you.
Woltman?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Eva, what do I got, a few things. Hey, um, on the ARPA funding, this is, this is the first half of funding already for this coronavirus funding is what it is. Though, the, the city of Lakeview is gonna receive a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, matter of fact, we received our first half of the funding today. The, the, there are some limitations on use of that funding. And that was on page four of the, of the memo, and that comes directly out of the, uh, out of, out of the, uh, front of statute. You know, it's things related to COVID, things related to COVID, and, um, some additional pay for, for workers and this type of stuff, and you get down to number four, make necessary investments in water, sewer, abroad.
I think for the camper, you know, the camping, I think that would fit right in there. For the electrical, you know?
It didn't say electric, you know, it's the water sewer abroad.
Whatever.
Water pump station.
Yeah, so that's, we know that we have some law, some large water projects out there, and just wondering.
So this might help for the west end?
Yeah. Yeah, so it, uh, so what I'd like to be able to devote these funds to water projects. And, you know, whether, and whether it's the Avaco project, you can assist with that, but if we wanna do that, that west pump project, that would really help cash flow that thing. If we, if we utilize that funding for that, for that project. So just, uh, really just looking for a commitment that we would utilize that funding for water purposes and, and we could proceed along that way.
I agree.
Do we have a motion on that?
Yeah.
Check it.
Second.
Roll call.
Used for water purposes. Okay, Woltman?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Stankham?
Yeah.
Great, how about just?
Could we, are you done or?
No, I've got several more, thanks. Go ahead.
Could we, um, have the city attorney, can we have it on the agenda next week or whatever we have to have, um, our next meeting? To have him move forward with that access out there on North State Road?
Okay.
Have the attorney handle that? I mean, I'm not, I'm just calling for discussion or whatever.
You know, as they talk about that, that access out there for that Lakeview Partners project, really nothing new to report on. I have not had any interaction with the folks.
So the question is, are we gonna have interaction from you, or should we have the attorney handle it? I guess that's where I'm going.
However you'd like it, I get to go.
I don't know, I just wanted to inform.
That and some six fifty, seven ten eights. I got three.
Who's the other, who's the council? I don't know. I don't know if it needs to be on the agenda or what? I don't know if it needs to be on the agenda, or what?
We gotta get moving soon.
Well, we'll, we'll get to moving on this one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Couple things, just any update on electric project, Jeff, other than the contract we showed up today?
Contractors are here this morning. Um, one thing, out at Evapco, just talking with Whitey's brother, he's doing the new building, the electrical and that. We were doing some talking out loud last Friday, we have decided to, the loop feed that we're coming off another pole to come around and tie into the. Um, new service and transformer. I would like to pull that off a year, because now they're talking, if they expand later on west of this new building. We're gonna have to have somewhere to have a connection to add another transformer down the road, so I'd like to hold part of that project off. So it's about, it's about a thousand feet of three phase that we won't be putting in now, we'll come back and do it.
And they're okay with that?
Yep, cause they don't have it now.
So, what about the, the problem you were having with them because of the way the building was gonna be located? Is that?
They are burying, they buried the pipe and pulled the wire in today to replace the existing wires, which was the problem. They, they pushed that building out where the existing wire is, so they're gonna actually dig up some of that existing wire, so. As soon as I get my parts here, then we could schedule an outage and get that transferred over, so that's our hangup right now. Wait for transformer to get here and some fittings that go inside of a transformer.
Okay, alright.
So, other than that, these guys will probably be in and out of here, um, I would say by the end of Thursday, they won't be here. So.
Good.
That is great. How about a, a lagoon update then?
Uh, Healy's been out there, uh, digging up that bank, um, they're putting clay back in there, team services there, uh, testing it. Every time they put, uh, more clay in, I'm very happy with B and K's inspector, he is there, he is out of the truck. He's testing, he's writing everything down, and he's doing a heck of a job.
So we have a new one here?
Yes, yes.
So.
They're doing what they were supposed to be doing while they started.
Yeah, exactly. So is this, um, the, I mean, we already dug up that south, are we just out farther?
We are, uh, so the last time we took all the rock out, um, the last time, um, and then put in bentonite, more clay.
Right.
Now we're in the drive, and we dug down.
So we're just out farther?
Out farther, trying to catch it, um, there has been a lot of seepage still coming in from the. From the, uh, berm itself, from the inside of the lagoon side, um, it's, you know, when they dug down there, it was still seeping through, um.
Is that where that's coming in that west part?
That's where it's coming through and getting to, to the, uh, outside of the berm. We, uh, when Healy was there doing some exploration on this, we just kept following the, the, the trail of water.
So this should fix it?
Yeah, can you take a look at page twen, at twen, page twenty-eight?
I don't know, uh, it's. The engineer says that it should.
Of course, the engineer said it wasn't. The venture looked better than we've ever done before.
Engineer stole us a lot.
I mean, it's, it's a very, very comprehensive effort to address the problems on the south side.
They didn't have to put bentonite in there, um, they did testing on the soil that was coming from Evapco, um, and it passed what we needed. They've been adding water to it, team services have been there, you know, they're, they're all making sure that that clay is perfect for what they're trying to do.
Well, the DNR's been helpful, I think, in this case.
Yes, Tom has.
So, uh, what about any other problems at the lagoon?
Um, the aeration is a problem, um, cause our dissolved oxygen is not where it needs to be, um, so. We're gonna go out tomorrow and run one of the laterals from cell number one into cell number two, so we get more dissolved oxygen, more aeration out there. Hopefully that'll help, um, we've been in contact with Nexum about, uh, our output of dissolved oxygen hasn't been very good, and we've been. In violation.
Alright.
We haven't got a fine or nothing, just we're in violation, we're trying to rectify that.
We got the notice on that today, Dean.
Did we?
We got a notice violation.
Didn't they cut them hoses too short?
Yes, they did, uh, Christiansen did, and so. So, um, so what it was, they cut six inches too low, or shortened it six inches, so now the head pressure on those, uh. Diffusers didn't have enough, so it was actually taking air from cell number two, is, is actually shutting them down. And so we'd have to go out there every day to start them back up.
So why did it do that, and did the, is that a design from B and K? And was their inspector, that the old inspector we had, would he approve this?
Uh, when it was designed, the, the whole thing was designed to be at a certain level. And then when they went out to take the diffusers off, um, the first time when we took all the rock out of the, uh, and during the, uh, cell number one. Uh, they cut them off.
Oh, that's when they shortened them?
Yeah, they shortened them then, and then, uh.
And who did the, Christiansen?
Christiansen.
It's okay, Whitey.
There's some deep breathing bug on there.
They're getting it done, hopefully.
So, this should be, I mean, I mean, obviously all of these things are their problem, but they're our problem too.
Correct.
Right, but they're getting fixed.
Exactly, and we haven't, you know, contrary to some public belief, I mean, that article that Connie put in a while back was very helpful, because we have not. You know, this is their fixes, not ours, and we have not accepted this project, so, you know, the ball is in their court.
And Nexum is supposed to be coming down to help with the, uh, help with everything, also to watch Chris, Christiansens. Put those new hoses on and make sure everything is set perfectly.
Okay, alright, thanks, Dean.
Cause we do have a, a new setup with the proper length of diffusers coming now.
Okay, okay.
Those will go back in.
And that's all the charge to?
Through the bond company, yeah.
Okay.
Um, couple other things for you, um, Catherine Richardson has, has resigned from the Planning and Zoning Commission, she's, uh, they're only gonna live here part-time. Be, be gone for, uh, some months of the year, so, so Catherine has resigned, we have an opening on that. Um, we have, like, from last time when we, when we solicited interest from that, we have, uh, one applicant yet, uh, left from that, Don Hout was still interested. But having said that, then, we'd be back to, uh, to four males, and, and we may need to look at the gender equity side things.
Aren't you gonna put something in?
We'll take application again. Yep, um, down on Third Street, right across from the, from the campground, John Snyder is working on a, uh, housing project down there. But also doing. Some improvements to, to the driveway, putting in a circle drive. They have had for years, they've had problems with the curb and gutter down there on their existing driveway, and, and lots of bonding that, that went along with that. Uh, I asked, uh, Linen's doing the construction down there, I asked him for a cost estimate about what it might take to fix that curb and gutter. While they were, were torn in to the, uh, project down there. Ends up being a lot more than, than what I had anticipated, a hundred and fifty-three feet of, of curb in order to come up with three inches to drain over a hundred and fifty-three feet. Uh, at forty-five bucks a foot, so it was six thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars to try to fix that problem, um. Maybe a little bit more than, than, more of a project than what I had hoped for originally, but, your thoughts?
Can we cost to fix it no matter what we do?
Well, you can, you know, I mean, if, if the water's pooling in front of their place, is that the way this is the problem? Well, I can identify with that, so I.
Fix it one of the there.
I think mom and Crusher think are gonna redo something, but now they had to replace that pipe out in front of the house, cause it's orange something.
Sewer.
Um, so now their concrete part's on hold, but they're, so some of that wouldn't get put back, cause they're going to either do a circle drive thing, or widen out their driveway also.
So would we wait till they're done, or, well, Linen would do it as part of his project.
He'd do ours there, but he said it, it does not have to be done at the same time as the project, but, uh.
Well, unless we're gonna turn around and have to, I mean, do they have a problem with drainage, I don't?
Well, I was telling Scott this, um, the water that comes down from John Snyder's and the homes behind it, comes down that hill. And what, um, some of my campers have investigated this, that water that runs from John's down past my mom's over to the museum. And then back down across into the campground, and then down that strip that floods.
So bad.
So bad, and it's all coming from behind Snyder's and into the campground, which now all, the construction guys came in and redid, did the pads and did the drainage and did that. And it's doing its job, it's just there's so much water, so we get so much grief about how horrible these people were for construction and not knowing what they're doing. You know, um, but it's the way the water runs from behind Snyder's, down on them, and around, and where the flow of the water's coming from.
It was probably engineered.
Probably.
It was not engineered, but it was, it was put in by, by city staff with the, and the concept is it flows the other way, the north part of, of the campground flows. Uh, underneath the road and ends up flowing to the north.
Like keys down there.
Yeah, that's how it's supposed to go.
It came out.
Is that the way it runs? I mean, is that the way it runs? The way it's designed to run? I'm confused here.
It all ends up at the campground.
It's all, it's all in the campground, and then all our new A pads are absolutely flooded.
You get some of that from Crescent Park too, in your A pads.
Yeah, yes, and you're right, and it comes down, horse shield, it all comes to the campground, every bit of it, there's just nowhere for it to go, but. Whether we need another berm, or even if we had one more of those to drain faster, cause, so there's only a, I think they told me a six percent grade. From where the actual yellow, what do you call that?
The intake.
Your intake, to, um, between L by LA where it goes into the lake, it's like a four inch pipe or a six inch, it's four inches, I think. And a six percent grade, so it can't dump the water out that fast, I have it all on video, it's just a little pipe. So I don't know if we could install another one, so it doubles it faster, um, because again, it's, it's flooding all the new stuff that we just put in. And there's, we, we have all kinds of pictures.
They come up to the bottom to pick up, well, I could roll one through there when the rains are, it'll, it'll be up to the, the rocker panel to pick up through there, it's.
Well, I think we need to look at this, you know, I don't know if Dean, you need to have some help, I got, I'm sure we know an engineer. But I, you know, I just think.
I'm with you on the same thing, you know, and you, and you, we're gonna put a big tile come off Crescent right back into the campground as well.
Exactly.
I, I.
I mean, I have a.
They're having all these issues, I, I, I'm hesitant about putting more water straight right at them.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, the people like that live on Crescent, I, that's what I get, just bombed with video, you better call the construction, this, they didn't do something right, and you guys have a horrible mess.
Well, the problem is.
It's doing exactly what they put in to do.
But it, you know, it's flat down there, it's a lake, and, you know, and it's not like the land's up here, and the lake's down here, and the lake water goes underground far. It goes to my house from the lake, you know, it goes farther than people realize. And so you got all that at the campground, which is really low.
Right, that's why there's only a six percent grade from where this drain spout is going over to the lake, I mean, it, there's hardly, six percent's nothing.
Right.
Fixing Snyder's.
I dug two feet deep in the campground two weeks ago, and I had groundwater.
It continues to go to the east, okay.
It needed to go to the north, towards the farm, maybe pharmacy.
Well, that's where it goes, excuse me, I mean, we're, we're, it, it continues on Third Street, stays in the gutter on Third Street.
Keeps that out of the campground if we can get it there.
Well, do we need like, um, you talked about doing a, a drainage study over there with the new development on, on, you know, where the junk here is. Is this something that we need to have that area looked at, is it worth that money to do that?
Potentially, um.
We don't know what the solutions are.
I say it's just tough, really tough solution.
Solution would be to have a study done, to find out what we could do for drainage there, because the whole campground is just dredge material from.
Right.
A lake anyway.
It's silt, I, I could be passed.
Right.
Just nugging it.
So it was, it's a man-made land out there years ago.
Well, obviously we can't build that up, but I don't know if we can divert the water, that's, at least, at least if the campground only had their own water to deal with, and not the water coming from across. If we could divert that water.
Wanna confirm that that's, you know, it, it is intended so it drains to the north, not, not the way Sandy was describing.
Well, somebody's wrong.
I just, yeah, we, we would wanna be able to observe it and know for sure.
It's an issue that needs to be fixed, it's getting fixed.
I think so too, I, and if we.
If we have to fix the gutter, we fix the gutter.
Right, yeah, I think we should go ahead with the gutter project, I'm all for that, I just don't know when you wanna do that, if, if that project. You know, if you need to canvass the owners there, and I don't, I don't know. How far was this project gonna go, just in front of their house?
A hundred and fifty-three feet, but it's in front of Snyder's house, but it, it goes further to the, to the west, or to the intersection of Sixth Street almost. Where there's an intake there at the corner, and it looks like it should drain to that intake, but it doesn't, everything drains to the west.
Right, so their project wouldn't really matter, because they're to the west of John, right?
Oh, that's not right, Crusher's is, they're further east of us.
Further east?
Yeah.
Which place is John's?
Well, that's because he.
Where they're doing the work?
Yeah, Gersh, John's.
Okay.
Okay, alright, okay, well, I just think if you can get it to go to a drainage, then that's what it ought to be doing, not going the other way.
Yes, fix it.
Okay, uh, just a couple, a couple of things for you, this thing called Soil Management Plan, if you're folks that take the, a chance to take a look at that. This is, is what the proposal would be as far as, uh, uh, the environmental remediation down there at the Raritan property. So basically, it, it says, uh, when there, when there is soil disturbance down there, we do need to have somebody on hand, and it could conceivably be this consultant. Who has some, uh, test equipment, who would, who would test the soils for, for, uh, mainly these, these fuel-related components. So they, there's a lot of testing with this handheld tester involved, and then when it, when they do find, uh, anything that may be potentially. More hazardous, what they do is stockpile it there on site, get, get some lab tests done on that, and if it truly is problematic, then we gotta, we gotta haul that stuff offsite. Um, if it's, uh, if it is not above these threshold limits, then it can stay there on site and, and, uh, still be utilized for the, for the project.
So the testing we did identified it, but it doesn't really test detailed how fat it is, so now we gotta test again?
Yeah, did while, during, during the construction.
During the construction, I thought we were gonna haul dirt in there from Evapco.
Yep, two, couple things, so that the, the testing can take place during construction, we'd have this guy with his little tester, uh, around. Uh, just given some rough cost, you know, he said he'd be here to be about seven hundred and fifty dollars per day. When, when he would be around, uh, to do the testing and would be here for however many days it's necessary while, while the earthmoving is taking place, but just would be hopefully a handful of days. And then when they do find any suspect material, there can potentially be some, some lab fees associated with it, and if there's bad, uh, bad materials, then there's some fees to actually get that offsite and ends up at the landfill. But those are all, those are all worst-case scenarios, you know, he's, he's thinking that based upon the, the borings in the, in the test results. That you just don't anticipate things being above a, a threshold.
So they think we can just haul dirt in, and we're not gonna have to take, haul away? So they think we can just haul dirt in, and we're not gonna have to take haul away?
True.
But they're not gonna do that until we're hauling dirt in?
Nah, the hauling dirt would be a, a, a separate thing, and I, but I did ask them about that, you know, could, could the developers conceivably start hauling some dirt in from the Avaco site, and they said that would be just fine. It doesn't, you know, void anything, or, or cause any problems with, uh, with the testing.
Why does that seem funny, that you would haul dirt in, and then they might make you dig it all up? Am I missing something here?
You do, you know, you, you wouldn't ever test any of the stuff they got hauled in, it'd be the pre-existing stuff.
So they won't drill down underneath, so if we go in and fill it all with dirt, there, then the tests are all good?
We're not gonna fill that much dirt, but yeah, it, uh, they are, they're only testing the dirt of the area that has been disturbed. So when they do, you remember all the, the homes that slathered on great, so it's, it's just testing that area that's been disturbed, right? The more likely area where there's much more digging involved would be for infrastructure installation.
Okay, alright, got it.
So, we just got this, uh, proposed management plan from our consultant today, he'll turn around and, and get that to the DNR. The DNR does need to sign off on the management plan.
Okay. So all the buildings that are down there, that are left are ours? Or some of those delves?
They're, they're delves, we, we don't have any.
We just have the depot.
Just the depot building.
So we would just leave them there until we decide this project's going through?
What street? The buildings?
Yeah.
It's still, it just seems like you wanna make sure that, uh, that we're good to go on the environmental side, before we keep plugging into the green. Now, having said that, I was talking with the developers, and they're, they are very much still committed to this, and would anticipate moving forward, talked about moving dirt, uh, bringing in some dirt there.
So do they have the go-ahead from us to move the dirt?
Yes, yeah. They had asked if they could, if they could stockpile some, and, and that would be fine.
Okay, alright.
And, just FYI, here's your, here's your census population figures.
I can't hide the limit. Well, all these people building and moving in, and we're going down.
It, alright, you see there are, our population went down twenty-nine people. Eleven hundred and fifteen would be our, would be our population. Um, of course, you can see things county-wide, the, the population was, was down also, so, um, in some respects, I was surprised that it was only that much. I know we got a lot more housing units, but, uh, there's a lot more seasonal folks, because we don't count in the center.
Motion to adjourn, second? Needing adjourn.
Did Whitey second?
Yep.
Yeah, I guess I did, yeah, second.
Alright. Alright, Whitey, thank you.
Is there some problem, like, air?
Alright. Yep, safe travels, yep.
Alright, so there's more room on these sheets of siding, just anybody thinks of a sign that we can post anywhere in town, and I don't have space left on this. So, well, I just wanna build these sheets of siding.